Let's call the meeting to order, please. It's March 20th, 2018, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez? Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Hart?
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Here.
Mayor Murillo?
Here, thank you. Okay, any changes to the agenda, Mr. Casey?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. Adelaidea Ortega, you're up first. And you'll have two minutes. You'll be followed by Phil Walker. And then Barbara Gonmuller. Welcome, Ms. Ortega.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Adelaide Robles Ortega, and my family has been here in Santa Barbara forever. So, we're trying to build a little granny flat in the back of our house, and my son is going to live in the front and I'm going to live in the back. But it has been a real nightmare going through this with the city because there's so many obstacles that they have wanted us to do, and it's cost so much money. First, they wanted us to dig up the front of the house where we have beautiful pavers in the front of the house where the car can park, and they wanted us to dig that up and put a garden. But I told them that I didn't want to do any more gardening, you know? I want to just relax and enjoy my time. And so, they wanted us to do that. Now, they wanted us to put in a bicycle for our storage of our bicycle. I don't even ride a bike, and I'm going to be there living by myself. We started off with 800 square feet, and now we're down to 700 square feet. And they want us now to put in some fire sprinklers, and so now we're waiting on that. And then, they didn't know where the easement was at the house because the house was built in the 1930s. And I was just lucky to inherit this house from my family. And there's so many families that I know are going through the same thing. And I have a lot of families who can't afford to live here, and they make a good living, but they can't afford it. So, they're moving back. They want to do what I have done, but since they've seen what I've been going through that is just, you know, putting people off. But then, you get these people who come in from out of town and build these humongous places, and they go up in no time. And we've been in this for about three years. So, I don't understand the thing about the ADU or whatever it is. I don't understand that. I don't even think my architect understands that because he's still dealing with that. We're still waiting for the city to get back on that with us.
Ms. Ortega, what district do you live in?
I'm at 1028 Olive Street here in Santa Barbara.
Okay. So, I think that's District 6. So, or why don't you get ahold of me and I'll help, and I'll see what I can do to connect you with the planning department?
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll see if we can help you.
Oh, and this is Betty. She was named after Betty White because Betty White sponsored us at the Guide Dog School.
She's so welcome here. It's good to see you both.
Thank you.
Thanks. Phil Walker, you're next.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I was walking down Quinientos, down, turned the corner on Canada Street there, Clifton, up to Salinas, okay, and to my wife's family home down on Lower Canada Street. And it was about 11:40 a.m. yesterday, Monday, and I almost hit the deck. And this fellow or lady flying, it was probably, I thought it was originally a OF-15 Strike Eagle, possibly going to Vandenberg. No, it turns out my wife saw the TV news brief on KYT, and they said it was a Navy plane, probably an F-18 Super Hornet, but it definitely had the swept wings. And when he was passing over me, he had both, full afterburners were lit and then some, and my head rattled, and I almost hit the deck, not the actual deck of the aircraft carrier, but the deck of the bridge over Quinientos. It was that. It's been a while since, when I was in the service, they had, the workhorse was the F-4 Phantoms, you know? And they would rattle your head, too, on full afterburner. But, you know, there should be some notification to the public that it was supposedly training, that this thing is going to happen. I don't know, training what for? Urban civil insurrection control or wildland, somewhat wildland urban interface assault, you know, coast hair support? But, you know, it was noticed, KYT was aware of it. So, the airport, I'm sure, was aware of it, too, the city airport. So, notice is good. And, you know, it possibly could have tripped off some PTSD from vets, too. And there needs to be closer confirmation and working with the city if these flyovers are going to happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Walker. Ms. Gonmuller, come on up. You'll be followed by Clint Orr and then Tony Wellen. Welcome.
Welcome to you, too. Thank you for letting me address you, City Council and Madam Mayor. I'm Barbara Gonmuller, President of the United Nations Association, and we cover all San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara County, and Ventura County. As you know, water is precious. We wouldn't be here without the precious resource every day. It's a necessity of life. Yet where are we when we're looking at the water situation around the world? And where are we when we're looking at water in Santa Barbara? We have to become partners for the water resources as we see them in the news press. Here we come today, watch out, rain coming. What are we doing about watching the rain in our buckets, saving water, using the engineering of consent, allowing people to know? Water is not something that's going to be here forever, as you know. Water is what we took care of in 1990 when they hired my PR company to bring the awareness that Gibraltar was dry. We had to hire a helicopter to show the cracks and tell people, believe there is a problem, that we're part of the solution, and we're going to be fair about it. We're not going to handle the water problem. So, remember when I had Westy Fairlie pulling a camel around the mission saying, "Camels in Santa Barbara? No, not yet. But when we all save water, we may not have to resort to that." We must get the attention to this precious resource, and it begins with each of us. Come to a United Nations Association meeting. We meet every fourth Tuesday at the University Club. We're at UNASB.org. Become part of the solution and begin to understand why the United Nations global voice begins at the local level. Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Council.
You do really good work. Thanks so much. Mr. Orr, come on up.
Mayor Murillo and Councilmembers, Clint Orr here. I want to answer his question about the jets. It's generally the federal government watching the president. They, if you've ever been in an airport, they have the attack helicopters, they have the jets that clear from Tijuana to Vandenberg. So, if he's checking out the, you know, the wall, he's going to have the jet support. So, there's your answer. Okay. So, anyway, let's go back to my favorite subject, which is the airport. You knew that. I had to read that in the paper this week that you guys got to pay a full year or two at the Old Elephant Bar. Took it in the shorts, did you? No offense, but I had an answer, which was to put in something of an entertainment value there. I questioned the planning that is going on at the airport. You know, putting in car dealerships and rental car dealerships when we've got Uber and Lyft, and it's just, everything's going into a downward spiral of, you know, the airport, the way to cure the airport and to cure that restaurant is putting entertainment across the street. We should all know that by now. There's nothing there. I don't know if you've been to Galita. Why would you fly there? You wouldn't. You've got to put something there on the land north of Hollister. It's your obligation. And you need the seven of you need to take over the airport authority and say, "We're going to put in what's in the best interest of the airport." That, I think that also the Amtrak needs it. Have you ever been to Amtrak? You ever got off there? Have you really? Dangerous. You have? Yeah, it's not a good spot. They need something there, and I didn't make it up. Oh, and just back to the situation, the red zone in Montecito, which is dear to my heart. Just like in Malibu, you can't stop Mother Nature. You build higher up. They've got to be risen 10 feet, put a little basement, and the houses graded down to the rocks.
Thanks so much.
And the mud flow for the next 100 years. So, you've got to raise them up. Thanks.
Ready. Ms. Wellen, are you ready? And you have four minutes. Gabriel Lucatero is giving you his time. I saw him earlier. There you are.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Tony Wellen. And gun violence is an epidemic in America, and we are all touched by gun violence. Everyone is extremely concerned about gun safety at school and at home. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the community. Yesterday, a nine-year-old boy, and this is in the packet of information that I gave you, nine-year-old boy shot his 13-year-old sister and killed her. The mother was making lunch in the kitchen. Today, there was another school shooting in Maryland. Where do these kids get the guns? Today, excuse me, in the past four years, the Coalition Against Gun Violence has attempted to reach schools and parents regarding specific methods that parents and kids can do to prevent gun violence in homes and at schools. We spoke to school boards. We mailed information to the superintendents and principals. Nothing happened, no reply or request for more information. The information we want parents and kids to have is in the packet in front of you. First, there's the news clip about the shooting. Then, there's a letter from State Superintendent Tom Torleksen about safe storage of firearms and school safety. In the fourth paragraph, he states, "Please consider this an urgent request to inform your school community that this," and this is what we tried to do for four years, "and we hope that parents are watching and learn about what they can do. The Coalition is here to inform and help." Schools have their own safety policy. This information is for parents and kids. Keep your kids and mine safe." There's a flyer in English and Spanish. Wait a minute, find it, just a second. I have the one that's in Spanish. If firearms were, if you have a firearm in your home, and that's your choice, but you have minor children, that gun must be locked and unloaded and separate from the ammunition. That's the law in California. So, we have a flyer that says that, and we want to pass it out to parents. We want to get parents to be informed because this person who was making lunch and the gun that killed her 13-year-old daughter was in the nightstand. We don't want that in California. We don't want it in Santa Barbara. Then, we have a flyer about the Gun Violence Restraining Order, which is a piece of legislation that came out of Isla Vista. It's called Speak for Safety. They have a website, speakforsafety.org. And we are having, at our annual event, a woman, who, her name is, off the top of my tip, Amy Barnhorst, and she is going to be speaking about mental health. The Gun Violence Restraining Order is something we all need to learn about. Santa Barbara has issued more of these than any county in the state of California, and Salud Carbalhas has introduced it in Congress.
Your time is up, Ms. Wellen.
Okay.
I know Ms. Inda's coming up later. She can add more. And I know you're working with our youth council. And Ms. Inda was at the last meeting. I know she can tell us more about that. But before Ms. Inda, Ruth Morales is next. Ms. Morales, come on up. You have two minutes.
Hi there, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. I am Ruth Morales. I'm an economist, professor of economics at SBCC. I am here to request and suggest that you take on something that is low cost, does require your invitation and your action. I know you've been busy with disaster response and disaster relief, but I think as part of disaster preparedness, one thing we can do that is very low cost for the region is to actually invite Airbnb to launch their disaster response program should another disaster hit. We could have, to be perfectly honest, done that, but it does require an invitation. I think most of you got an email from me, but I know you were busy, both in the transition and with the response itself. It will, so this is a suggestion. They do require an invitation, though, and it's easy. They launch the response and they provide a website. If you want a website to go look at, you can Google Airbnb Harvey evacuation, and it'll pull up the page where they had, and they open it up. And what happens is residents who normally feel helpless can actually help. They can open up their homes. They can open up a bed or a room, provide it for free, and it provides for this search and matching inefficiency. That's usually the problem to, for the matches to come together, right? And as I said, it's virtually costless for us. It increases efficiency. It would help those directly impacted evacuees, and then also our much-needed labor force because we know we can't be as productive if our labor force is on the other side of the highway. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Inda?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Dominguez.
So, I think, can I ask the city attorney a question based on the last public comment? With regard to the housing supply and the role having short-term rentals opened up in areas of the city where they currently aren't allowed, is there something in the code or is there something other cities are doing to allow this? The speaker mentioned Houston. It's different states, they have different laws, but what is it that the city could do, if anything?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, my suggestion would be if the speaker wishes to send us a copy of their invitation, we can take a look at it and compare it and see if there are any issues, whether there's California law or City of Santa Barbara ordinance issues that are raised by it. I haven't seen that invitation yet, and so, until I do so, I can't comment specifically on it, but I'd be willing to take a look at that.
Okay. If we can get you the city attorney's email address or phone number for a contact, because I think it's a great idea. It's the private sector helping out private individuals. The government can have very little to do with it. It could be revenue neutral to the city in terms of our budget. I mean, be happy to play a bigger role, but I know one of the concerns is always, how much is it going to cost us? But I would definitely support you, speaking with the city attorney and seeing if there's something we can do that would ease this crisis. And I'd love to see other communities get involved in this. I'd love to see, you know, Galita taking residence if carpentry has a problem and vice versa. You know, if Ventura has another fire that doesn't extend up here, it would be great if we had our homes open because it does have a big impact on household economies when they have to go stay in a hotel room. Councilmember Sneddon and I were out on Coast Village Road this morning, talking with business owners and local residents, and it was just amazing, the comments they had about how much it impacts their family, having to stay in a hotel, particularly if you have kids. The kids get antsy and restless right away, and to have the sense of security of being able to stay in a home, particularly if you're impacted for more than three days. This is really aimed at people who are out for weeks at a time, two or three weeks. Obviously, if it's over 30 days, the short-term rental rules don't apply, but the problem is where do people go to find it? So, Craigslist is the option, I think, that's been used the most, but it would be great if we had something. I know we're doing a program for materials where people are able to get materials, donate materials, that are turning up in Montecito and other afflicted areas. So, it just seems like with technology at the high level it is today, there's no reason not to harness its power to match people who need housing with people who have it.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Morales. Ms. Inda, you're our final speaker.
Mayor Murillo, Councilmembers, I have for you a list of different comments. I'm going to go ahead and drop this off this way. I'll keep my comments brief. "It takes a village when it comes to addressing gang and any kind of youth violence, any kind of violence in the community, or anything that has to do with guns. It takes a village. We were woken up at the beginning of this year, not by celebration, but by a body found in the middle of the street on De La Vina. We have been faced with this personally within our schools. There has been lockdowns in our regional areas. There has been fear throughout our community." What do I mean by "it takes a village"? I call on U.S. Councilmembers to join a task force with all of our regional schools, our district attorney's office, our youth council, to look at potential options in addressing what we call gun violence at schools. What we're really talking about is safety throughout our communities. So, you have in front of you a list of things that local jurisdictions can do and schools can do in a combined effort. What I suggest is that you take the time to really investigate what the Department of Homeland Security is calling for change within local jurisdictions, and that we start working together more closely with our schools so that we can all create the kind of policies that'll make all of our communities safer. And so, what you have in front of you is an ask. And the ask will also come from your youth council. And in fact, I encourage that you listen to your council when they come with those asks, and that you also enjoy and create a bondage between all of the different local jurisdictions to create a task force to start addressing policies at a local level. So, I thank you very much.
Thanks. So, our youth council has formed a gun safety subcommittee, an ad hoc committee.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sneddon and I attend their meetings. They have two a month, and so, we go back and forth. So, we'll stay in touch, and thanks for working with our teen leaders and helping them. I think it's part of it is a response to the Parkland, Florida, shooting that happened on Valentine's Day. And Ms. Wellen, thank you, too, for working with our youth. Okay, thanks. And that closes public comment for today, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Ms. Estrada, are there items to read?
Item number one, subject: Introduction of Ordinance Establishing Initial Tax Rates on Cannabis Businesses. Recommendation: That council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing reduced tax rates for different categories of medical and non-medical marijuana businesses pursuant to Santa Barbara Municipal Code Section 5.42.250. Item number two, subject: Introduction of an Ordinance for a Lease Agreement with JBC Investment Holdings LLC for the Lease Assignment of Mother Stern's Candy Company. Recommendation: That council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the waterfront director to execute a lease agreement with JBC Investment Holdings LLC located at 219-B Stern's Wharf commencing upon the effective date of the enabling ordinance. And item number three, subject: Adoption of Ordinance for Amendment to Lease Number 25105 with High Sierra Grill Santa Barbara, Inc. Recommendation: That council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving an amendment to lease agreement Number 25105 between the City and High Sierra Grill Santa Barbara, Inc. to extend temporary rent relief over a 12-month period.
Thank you. And Mr. Broskin with Mother Stern's Candy is here, if anyone has any questions. Is that you there in the blue shirt? I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. You organized the Merchants Association over there. Thank you so much for that. But if no one has any other objection, we can wait for the reading, and I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull anything or vote against something they voted against before? Mr. Rouse?
Yes, I'll pull item one, please.
Item one? Did you want to speak on it or just vote differently, separately?
I voted against it before because I think that we added in contravention of the voters' will in terms of reducing the rates as far as we did. Now, the state's talking about reducing the 15% down to 11, so I don't know when this whole thing stops, so I'm just going to vote against it out of principle.
Okay, we respect your position, sir. Do I have a motion for item one? Okay, that sounded like, okay. Hart and Friedman, any other discussion on item one? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that was four to two, with Dominguez and Rouse saying no. Okay. A motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
Settle.
Is that Dominguez?
Second.
And a second from Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No abstentions? Okay. Done with that item. We have both the Finance Committee and the Ordinance Committee met today. Mr. Hart, you're up first.
The Finance Committee met and heard a report from staff about proposed rates for wastewater and solid waste and approved moving forward with the noticing for those increases as a recommendation to staff.
Thanks. Ms. Sneddon?
I have a question on that topic.
Question from Mr. Dominguez?
Also for the city attorney. And I'm sorry, this came up in my mind after the Finance Committee, and if it's not something you can answer today, that's perfectly fine, but one of the issues is if we pay money to the county and this project doesn't get built, and this is for the increased tipping fees, is there a way we can enter into a contract with them now before we pay it where they would have to pay us back if it doesn't get built?
Madam Mayor, your, Councilmember Dominguez is correct. I can't give you an answer right now. Certainly, we could propose some reimbursement methodology, whether they'll agree to it and therefore enter into a contract.
Mr. Vincent, I'm going to stop you for just a second. Mr. Casey, this is a topic we take up in closed session. No, they just talked about it in finance, so it's okay if we have a short discussion on it?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I think it's fine, and Mr. Dominguez can forward to me his question about that. We'll be prepared. We're going to bring a status report on the Resource Recovery Project to the full council, so that'll be a good time to have that conversation. If it requires a closed session follow-up on that, we can schedule that as well.
Thanks. I'm sorry for interrupting you. You're good?
That's, I'm good.
And the concern there was just the RFP, if I understood correctly, was for $99 in tipping fees, and so now we're up into the 140s and no start date in sight, so I'm just wondering, you know, what could have been if the RFP would have been correctly, the number would have been correct. But that would be the concern and something that I'd look for an answer for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance Committee Report, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. We had a very efficient meeting reviewing floodplain management ordinance revisions to comply with federal Free Board standards and to clarify the applicability date. There were two few single-line edits to comply with FEMA, and that passed unanimously and will be coming to council for final approval.
Thank you. Now, item eight.
Item eight, subject: Disaster Training Workshop.
Mr. Casey?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. We would like to present today what is kind of a biannual update on disaster training workshop, but with the storm coming over the next couple of days, we would like just to take a few minutes as part of an introduction to talk about our storm preparedness efforts in that regard and just answer any questions you might have, and also just inform the community that we have a significant storm coming up for the next two and a half days and to be prepared. And so, I would like to just initiate that, and I think Battalion Chief Males is going to begin that conversation, and we'll have some other staff here preparing for it. We'll go through that, and then we'll have the scheduled item on the disaster training workshop as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Chris Males. I'm one of the four battalion chiefs for the City of Santa Barbara Fire Department. I just wanted to bring you up to date on what's going on with the storm preparation and our planning for the next 36 to 48 hours. As you know, we've been hit with a series of storms, also with the Montecito mudflow that has obviously raised our awareness and seriousness of storms in our area. This storm that is coming our way is absolutely no joke. This is one that we are very concerned about. The past couple of storms that we've had have been in the six-to-eight-hour range. The National Weather Service is looking at sustained rain event lasting in excess of 36 hours. We are very fortunate to have a great team of meteorologists at National Weather Service Los Angeles. The Fire Department today listened to a webinar by Eric Bolt, and we are actually looking at some unique circumstances with the storm. We have all heard of the atmospheric river. There absolutely is an atmospheric river that extends west to Hawaii. However, with this storm, we also have a second atmospheric river that is coming from down near the equator, and the two systems, river systems, are expected to materialize together off the coast and come into our area. Unfortunately, we are expecting the brunt of the weather. If you look at the If you look at the rainfall totals that are forecasted for our area, the greatest totals are between Gaviota and Carpinteria, with some high totals also in Ojai. Santa Barbara right now, the City of Santa Barbara is forecasted to get 5.94 inches of rain through Friday, with five to 10 inches of rain forecasted in the foothills. The community of Ojai is forecasted to get seven inches of rain. So, but what we're looking at is really Gaviota down into the Ventura County line. Down in Los Angeles is much less rain. This is again a subtropical system. It's going to have very high snow levels. Snow is not going to be a factor. It's just a very, very wet system. So highest rainfall totals are expected to be in the half to three-quarters of an inch from early Wednesday morning. Now, we're expected to get some rain starting this afternoon, but the real bulk of the weather is supposed to come in tomorrow morning and extend all day tomorrow into Wednesday evening and overnight, really into Thursday and ending kind of Thursday night. So we're really looking at about a day and a half of rain. As I said, the totals are pretty significant. We are expecting, in the city, we are expecting some urban and small stream flooding. We're expecting to have the typical, you know, issues in the City of Santa Barbara, but compounded with that are the issues of monosito and the recent burn scars. As you know, with no vegetation on the hillside, it basically becomes a slick that sends water and debris down, so we are expecting debris flow. The National Weather Service is estimating what they call pretty significant debris flow as possible, and also, again, urban and small stream flooding. They don't expect a whole lot of wind with this until the system passes, so wind will not be a factor. So that's kind of what's going on, a weather briefing as far as in our city. What your fire department is doing is the following. Our eight stations are going to be business as usual, fully staffed. Additionally, we've called in numerous additional personnel that will be starting tonight at 5:00. We're bringing some people in tonight at 5:00, and we're also bringing additional people in tomorrow morning at 6:00, and we will work a 24-hour shift. I'm going to be tasked with leading five additional fire apparatus tomorrow morning starting at 6:00 in the morning for 24 hours, and then if needed, we'll replace those people after 24 hours. Those five resources, those five extra resources, are going to be available in the city, but most importantly, they're going to be available on the whole south coast. Because we have the Whittier Fire, we have the Thomas Fire, we have the Sherpa Fire, we have all of those fires where we could potentially see slides, these apparatus are going to be deployable to anywhere that's needed. If we need apparatus, additional apparatus in Carpinteria, we'll head that direction. That's the beauty of the mutual aid system. We're going to have some extra resources on duty. All of the other departments also have extra resources on duty, and wherever the problem is, we'll send those resources to deal with it. We're hoping that evacuations in monosito are going to go well, and we hope that we have a minimal life threat, but we're going to be onsite and ready to deal with that. So we're bringing in, again, numerous resources this evening and again tomorrow morning. We call that upstaffing, and that means beyond our normal complement of on-duty firefighters. We're going to have close to 20 firefighters additionally upstaffed, and if we happen to draw down on those people, in other words, we use all those upstaffed resources and we have to use our regular fire engines to assist, then we have a callback system to bring in firefighters to recall into the city. So we know the city is our priority, but it's really our duty to make sure we have extra people on duty during this event. So that's really about it as far as staffing. Just want to reiterate that this is going to be a really significant storm, and we're ready for it.
And Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
If you might hear from Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, on what our Public Works staff is preparing for, and then also Ms. McGlinchey about our emergency operations center preparedness.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Ms. Bjork?
Good afternoon, Mayor Mariau and councilmembers. Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. We are ready and prepared to respond to this storm. We have our streets crews ready, and we divide the city up into eight different regions and have a crew assigned to each of those regions. They are out there looking at places that are known to have problems as well as just doing sweeps through the area. We will be active throughout the storm. We have, all of them are radio dispatched so that we can be available if we lose phone communication, and we are coordinating closely with police and fire in the response of that crews. We have got heavy equipment staged at various locations, including loaders in our back truck, and we have a contractor on call if we need extra help. We will particularly be watching the creeks, especially the bridges over Sycamore Creek, to make sure that we don't get debris and materials clogging in those creeks and keeping them clear and flowing. We have delivered barricades to places throughout the city so that those can be deployed as needed, and we will be coordinating with police and fire to deploy those barricades if needed. Our Laguna pump station, which pumps out the sort of central part and business district of Santa Barbara, will be manned around the clock. It's, can sometimes be challenged to keep up with really heavy flows, but we will continue to work that as well as we can.
Did you have a question?
If you don't mind, when you're talking about barricades, I maybe missed the meaning. What kind of barricades?
Just traffic barricades to keep traffic from going through the, they're the wooden barricades with the wire legs, not the K-Rail.
And this is to keep people out of the evac zones?
Or to warn them of flooded streets and keep people from driving into areas that are hazards.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. We have sandbags available until 7:00 p.m. tonight. We have, our city yard is available, and Fire Department is also distributing them at Fire Station 7. I know that as of 11:00 a.m. this morning, we distributed over 3,050 tons of sand, so our residents are taking this seriously and getting prepared. There is a debris basin at Parma Park that is not full. It's an old abandoned debris basin, but it seems like it will be sufficient to accept debris that may come from the fire, the smaller area that burned above that. And then the high tide is plus five feet at Wednesday morning, well, Wednesday noon at, excuse me, Wednesday morning at 12:27 a.m., so hopefully that's ahead of the heavy rainfall coming, and then the tides decline after that, but high tides can hinder our creek straining and add to flooding.
Mr. Rouse has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Bjork, I was just going to ask about that, various city assets. So at the Laguna Weir Gates, for example, are those, do we have that berm breached?
Yes, both Mission Creek and Laguna Channel have breached, and so they're both currently flowing to the ocean.
Are we breached at the airport as well?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And those Weir Gates are functional, that's, they're already the...
The system is working well. We've been doing our maintenance on it, and we are hoping it will work as needed. I mean, we really rely on the pumps there as opposed to the gates to pump the water out.
And then my last two concerns are, of course, are the, and I've done, these are Caltrans pumps or OPR pumps under the freeway bridges.
The Caltrans pumps under the freeway bridges, we will coordinate closely with them as well as over on the Lower East Side along the freeway where that wall is that has the breakaway panels to allow flow over the freeway. So if we see any problems there, we'll make sure that we work closely with Caltrans and that we keep people from driving into dangerous situations.
And also the culvers underneath the freeway by Mission Creek and all that?
That's correct, and those are all Caltrans-operated, and we will work closely with them.
But they've been preemptively cleared and all that, is that...
I believe so. I know that they, Caltrans had done so in the previous storm. We haven't actually talked to them this time, but I know they're very much aware of it.
Good, thank you.
Do you have more presentation?
No.
Questions? Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
I did have a question regarding Caltrans. Is there any estimation on if they are going to proactively shut down Highway 101?
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman, thank you for that question. You know, we've tried to confirm that as well. The California Highway Patrol does not want to close Highway 101, but as they see under a radar situation, an intense rainfall period coming, they are saying they may close Highway 101 for that short period of time to keep people out of the area in case there is localized flooding that occurs. So I think the message to the community is the freeway is open, it's not planned on being closed, but they certainly will be monitoring any heavy rainfall events that are going to occur and close as appropriate and necessary there. And I would encourage people, if there's heavy rainfall occurring, that they should stay off the streets as well. It's a dangerous situation.
Mr. Dominguez, another question?
Yeah, when we were over at Coast Village Road today, we noticed a couple drainage installations on the curb, and these may have been county. They were on Olive Mill between Coast Village Road and the freeway, and one of them had orange bags in front of it and a couple cones on the curb, and the other one had white bags in front of it, like halfway covered. And I've noticed sometimes around town that some of our, I don't know, what's the technical term for these drainage of the curb? Stormwater?
The inlets?
Stormwater inlets?
I'm not quite sure what you're referring to, but I'm assuming it's the catch basins or the inlets.
Well, whenever you have a piece of curb that's missing and there's a hole that leads down into a system.
An inlet, yeah.
So that's an inlet.
Catch basin or inlet.
So it seems like sometimes I see some of them are partly covered, and I don't know if it's residents or people locally covering them, or if it's something the city does. Is there a policy or is there a consistency here or...
The circumstances in which I'm aware of, and first to start out, the ones you're referring to on Olive Mill would be county, but the situations that I'm aware of where we cover them when they are covered is to keep debris out during non-raining periods as a stormwater mitigation issue. We do have an active patrol, and we have gone out and inspected all of our storm drains to make sure they're clear and operable ahead of the storm, and so if we were to find any that were covered, we would uncover them so that they would flow properly.
Okay. And one specific intersection I'm curious about, or maybe I'll just ask you to inquire, but not now, Bond and Quarantina, during the rain last week, it flooded pretty high, and I don't know if that's because of the inlets being clogged or if it's just a natural low point.
I can look into that. I do know we do have a number of areas throughout the city that flood regularly with rainfall, even fairly small amounts of rainfall, and people who live in those neighborhoods generally know where they are, so I would caution people to be aware of those and avoid them, but we will look into that particular one for you.
And that one seemed to last like three or four days. I'm not sure if that's a sign of drainage.
I need to follow up to answer that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Miles or Ms. Bjork before we go to the next segment? Okay. Thanks for that. Ms. McGlinchey?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. As Mr. Casey said, we do these trainings every two and a half years or so as we get new city council members, mayors that are on, to let you know what your responsibility is during any type of a disaster. One of the things that I wanted to begin with is I wanted to let you know that the Emergency Operations Center will be activated beginning at 5:00 tonight, or 7:00 tonight at a Level 3, which means that it will be set up, all the computers turned on, the phones put in, and it'll be encapsulated, and we'll have minimal staffing there tonight. Minimal meaning me. So I'll just be monitoring and then having call back if I need to. At 7:00 tomorrow morning, we're going to go to a Level 2 activation, which means we will have emergency operations staff coming in with a management briefing at 7:30 in the morning to determine what our objectives will be for that operational period, which will be from 7:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m. And this way, the operational center can be open to support the staff that's in the field, to make sure that they have everything that they need, as well as helping the city with making sure that infrastructure needs are also met. So I wanted to update you on that. Also, I wanted to thank the Police Department today because they had 10 extra officers out there working with homeless encampments and making sure that they have places to go and that the warming centers will begin, they will be open tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. So just making sure that all of our residents are taken care of during the storm. So with that, we will begin. The objective today is basically to give you an overview of the state and federal laws, when to declare and why we do it, the types of proclamations, some phases of emergency management, what your roles and responsibilities are, and basically how you can prepare, and we can end with any questions or summarize as we need to. So federal government basically says that all local jurisdictions, state, federal, need to understand their role during disasters, and it's especially important for our elected officials to understand what their roles are, and this is from the national framework on regards to the effectiveness that you have when you understand what your roles are during a disaster. So why are you here? One, in the state of California, it's a law. We have the standardized emergency management system, which all local governments must use in order to get funding or eligible funding related to the disaster incident, in other words, recovery. So right now, we're working on recovery from last year's storms, and now we're working on recovery from this one. It is also required, the Federal Emergency Management Agency also requires it in the National Incident Management System, which the state of California is actually compliant with, so that makes the state compliant, makes us compliant, and so we're under that initiative, and so we get funding from the federal government because we're complying with that and because we're complying with the state's law. And by you having, by having this workshop with you, you also now become compliant because this is basically an orientation basic of what the standardized emergency management system is. So when do we declare a disaster? When we declare disaster, it's because our resources are being stretched. With the situation tonight, we need more resources. We need to be able to bring in more people because we do not have the resources to be able to respond the way that we should in the event that we have a large incident like the one that we have. Several times during the T Fire and during the Hayzahceda Fire, you know, those were large incidents, the Paint Fire, large incidents that we needed outside mutual aid, and so with that, that's when we would declare, declare an emergency, a local emergency. However, there is a caveat in that when the county or the operational area declares, we fall under that umbrella, so we don't need to declare. We can, there's nothing that says that we don't, but it makes it easier when we fall under that declaration because then they account for all of the damages that's done throughout the county, and it makes it easier to receive funding for that. So if there's a question of, you know, why didn't we declare during any of the incidents that we had, that's why, because the operational area declared right away. So there's several types of proclamations and declarations. So if we do one, it's a local emergency proclamation. It's issued, it can be issued pretty much by the city administrator and needs to be ratified within seven days by city council, and that's because usually disasters don't wait till we have council meetings. So we need to have a way to be able to declare. And then there's what the state calls a director's concurrence, which is the director, which is, the governor says, yeah, you had an incident, and yes, there may be some monies, or maybe there won't be. Just depends on the size of the incident and the costs. Then we have the governor's proclamation, which says, okay, now CalOES, you can release the California Disaster Assistance Act funding so that we're able to get public assistance for all of, for reimbursements, for staff, for overtime, for equipment, and for all the things that we use to be able to respond to any type of a disaster. Then there's a presidential declaration of emergency, which brings in all of the federal resources that we would need in the event that we have a large incident. The best example I can give is during a tsunami. It would, if we had a large tsunami that was triggered from Alaska or maybe the Hayward Fault, there are actually 16 counties that would be affected by a tsunami that size. So how do you do the resources? Well, that's where the state and the federal government work together to make sure that we all get the resources that we need. A presidential declaration of a major disaster is when it's a disaster that involves several jurisdictions, like Ventura and Santa Barbara, we've had the largest fire, and so that actually gave us this declaration of a major disaster. It helped us to get a local assistance center in, which brought in several agencies to be able to help the citizens to get back on their feet in recovery. So I wanted to go over a few of our municipal code. Director of Emergency Services, which is Mr. Casey, his powers and duties include to ask the city council to ratify a local disaster, to coordinate and cooperate between divisions, services, and staff, and resolve questions of authority responsibility, to use city resources for preservation of life and property, and to represent the emergency services organization in dealing with the public and private agencies. One of the other things that he does is he works with all the other jurisdictions, including the county and sometimes the state, in making sure that our city is taken care of in regards to resources and recovery. Some of the powers that the director has is to make and issue rules and regulations on matters reasonably related to the protection of life and property, to require emergency services of any city officer or employee, and to command the aid of many citizens of the community that he or she thinks in the execution of their duties as volunteers, and to execute all of his or her ordinary powers as city administrator. So we rely on our city administrator as the director of emergency services in order to, he kind of holds two hands. He holds one hand in the emergency operations center to make sure that the field crews are getting the resources that they need, and the other hand is holding on to all of the city policies and infrastructure and making sure that it's all being kept going, so billing is going and all of the services that we do are also going. So when a disaster happens, there's always confusion. Lack of communication should probably be the first one because that's usually what happens first. As soon as somebody sees a column of smoke, they automatically want to know what it is, and we don't even know what it is till we get there. And we don't even know what it is till we get there. And that's, we really rely on our field staff to be able to give that intelligence to us. The four phases of emergency management include mitigation. As an example of mitigation is what Public Works did with Mission Creek, widening it, making sure that there was good flow that goes through it. Preparedness is what public education does to remind the citizens to be prepared for any type of a disaster. So we go out in English and Spanish and try to get the word out to people to please be prepared for any type of an incident. And of course, response speaks for itself, you know, how we respond to the incident. And then recovery is a major portion. We start thinking about recovery right when the incident starts. How are we going to recover? Are we keeping the costs? Are we making sure that we're tracking all the resources that we use? So all those things kind of fold into each other. The management organization looks like this. So management's on top, operations are your doers, planning and intelligence are all your writers, and documentation, logistics are your getters, and finance, they pay for it. So in the whole org chart, you can see that mayor and council is actually connected to the AOC Director, the city administrator. But you actually have a part in public information. So that's why you have that little dotted line. You basically serve two places too. So where you're keeping policy, you're also the constituency, you're the face of the city for all your constituencies to make sure that they understand that we're doing what we need to do to help protect them. These are the levels. So if something's happening in the field that goes beyond their resources, we open up our local Emergency Operations Center, which causes the operational area to open, which causes the region and the state, and then the state will invite the federal government if that's needed. So right now, our Emergency Operations Center is located at Fire Station Number 1. We have three levels, preactivation, partial, and full scale. Our backup is at the airport. And within the AOC, we do coordination, communication, resource allocation, which is very important, and then information collection, analysis, and dissemination. So all that is taking place within the Operational Center. So your roles and responsibility as city council members. One is communication, to communicate to the public the nature of the event, the status of the community response, and what individuals should do during this, during any type of an incident. Strategic needs of the community, kind of keeping an eye out for strategic needs of the community and to make sure that those needs are met. For policy decisions, and again, staff will help with the policy decisions that need to be made for any type of an incident that causes significant damage within our city structure. And then support response to ensure resources are available across our jurisdiction and the department lines. So your immediate response checklist is to obtain a briefing by the city administrator or their designee. When available, report to designated location for information updates. The public information staff will assist with scheduling time for interviews with the media, and assistance from the public information staff to survey impacted areas, along with designated liaison. So we can take you out to look at the areas, and you can see what's going on. In the Operations Center, you're more than welcome to be a part of the operational area briefings. And we put out what's called an Incident Action Plan that have those briefing times on it, along with objectives that we're going to be doing for that operational period. Notification, you receive updates on current conditions by the city administrator, instructions on where and when incident briefings are planned. And as a caveat, before answering questions from any citizen or media, make sure that you've been briefed on current information. Again, how will you obtain this information? We're going to get it to you as soon as you can. I mean, I've become the spammer of emails lately, of making sure that information gets out to city staff on what's going on, what the weather's like, and what's happening in the city and with the Emergency Operations Center. So some tips for media communication. When you receive calls from the media, some of the things that you can say are, our operation center's open, our first responders are aware. These are some easy ways of, you know, sometimes you don't know what the answers are, but at least these will help you. We actually developed a brochure that I was hoping to bring with me, but I was a little busy this morning. So I'm going to get those to you, which actually have these tips on them for you. Things you don't want to say is, I don't know, no comment, and don't make any promises. Avoid speculation, tell only what you know. If you don't know an answer to questions, just say so and offer to get an answer back to them. And then again, just avoid making any promises. So some personal responsibility, by updating your personal supplies, making sure that you have a disaster kit ready, a go-kit to go, you have family plans, your family knows that if a situation happens, where you're going to be, making sure that you have a communications plan, making sure that you have something at work and at home, just in case. If you have children, making sure you understand what their school plans are, in case you can't get to your child, that you know where they're going to go and how they're going to be taken care of. And a good thing to remember is your roles and responsibilities are determined by your position and state and local law. So with that, any final comments?
Comments or questions from the council?
Questions, yes.
Ms. Sneddon?
I think it's both a comment and a question. I'm so appreciative of the briefings that we get and the communication. And sometimes I have questions about what can be shared with the public and what can't, and maybe as a comment that it might be helpful, a line across the top, or a line, or some designation that from here to here, this can be just cut and pasted or shared broadly because I think there are nuances to some of those communications that I would like to get information out clearly without over-informing where we don't need to. But such excellent communication from the city, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sneddon and Madam Mayor. One of the things that we do try to do is, between Mr. Casey and the chiefs and myself, we try to get information to each other. And then usually, Mr. Casey will send information out to all city staff, and I try to get out all of the public information or press releases that we get from the county or within the city out to everyone, and that's pretty much open to the public. But I like to get it out to city staff because we've learned in the past that sometimes we can get information out to the public really well, and sometimes we don't quite make it to the staff. So now we're really diligent on making sure city staff knows what's going on. So thank you for that.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. McGlinchey, I was, under the slides I deal with declaring an emergency, I was wondering, since asking the council to ratify a local disaster, does that mean that Mr. Casey has convened the council? And what's the timeline for that? So we get the multiple call at 3:00 a.m.? How do we do that? What can be preemptively done? What's his authority to do? What's his standing authority?
Thank you, Ms. Councilmember Rouse, Madam Mayor. So what would happen in that situation is the 3:00 call would go to Mr. Casey, and then he would do the declaration, and we have within seven days to bring the council together to ratify it.
So you can let us sleep?
You can sleep.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you for all this information and taking the time to put this briefing together for us. It's very informative. I had a couple of questions. The first is, being that we have a large storm coming, it's more for the public, is there a website or phone numbers that we can refer out now, just proactively, either for those who are watching now, or if we later on are able to disseminate those? If you have those now, that'd be great. If not, if you could get them to us, just so we can post that out. The other question I have is, it relates to 2-1-1 in terms of emergencies. At the previous Community Action Commission meeting, the issue of 2-1-1 came up, and how it was a huge resource during both the fire and the debris flow. And it was such, used so frequently for both, for all kinds of questions coming from the public, that it used basically its entire budget for the year in that two-month timeframe. And so I'm wondering, and some of the issues that came up were that 2-1-1 was referred as a resource, but yet 2-1-1 wasn't told about some of the calls they were going to be getting. So some of the first responders had called 2-1-1, so they started getting calls, and they didn't know the latest information. So I'm wondering, should we be referring people to 2-1-1 at times? Is that a good resource for the public during emergencies or in the recovery period? And then also, how are coordination with them to ensure they have the latest information as well? Because I think they're actually going to be receiving a lot more calls than we would up here. So if you have any information about 2-1-1, I'd be interested to know.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Sneddon. With 2-1-1, that's a resource county uses, and I would need to check with their Joint Information Center on how they're going to be using them this time. The Joint Information Center does have a call center in the county, that there is a number on their website, and I can send that website out to you. And then we are going to be putting a number out. I don't have it with me, but it will be sent out before the end of the day. It will be put on the website for citizens to call if they have any questions regarding evacuations or any other questions that they have. And then for your first question, it was regarding, I apologize, what was the first question? Same thing. Oh, the number called, yes. So we'll be getting that number out today. So we're working with Communications on getting that number.
Mr. Dominguez?
PATH and the Freedom Warming Center just updated their hours. So PATH is actually opening at 5:00 today.
Okay.
And Freedom Warming Center at 6:00. So if people want to update that information.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll ask, so our Operations Center is at Fire Station 1, and then when the county is activated, it has a different Operations Center. Can you tell us about that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Operations Center is actually at county. Emergency Operations Center is at the Office of Emergency Management, 4408 Cathedral Oaks. So they will be opening tonight at a Level 2, I believe.
But if it was just a city emergency, then ours would be open?
Ours will be open anyway.
Regional-wide?
Both, yeah.
Okay, both.
Both will be open, along with Carpinteria. Carpinteria City will also be opening their Emergency Operations Center tonight.
Okay. So we're getting ready for Mr. Casey?
Madam Mayor, just to kind of explain a little bit more of that, because that was a good question. Emergency Operations Centers are set up to provide resources to the first responders in the field, to make sure they have what they need and to be strategically planning for the event. So that's why the county AOC will be open to be strategically planning for the county emergency response. But we may also open our city AOC to be dealing with the city response, for our fire and police staff who are in the field, for the Public Works staff in the field. And then we're coordinating and often have a staff person liaison in the other AOC to be closely coordinating, so we're communicating well together. So you will, on large events like this, see both agencies activate their AOCs.
Okay. So we're getting ready for flood, fire, earthquake, tsunami, you mentioned?
That was just an example. Yeah, no tsunamis.
Add that to my worry list. Ms. Sneddon?
Are there opportunities for us to volunteer? If we wanted to support you, what would be the best way to do that, aside from communicating with our constituents? What would be the, can we come to the AOC? Or are there opportunities for us to help you in different ways?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Sneddon. The best way that you can help is to be the voice for the city, to the citizens, to let them know that the city's doing what it needs to do to protect lives and property and the infrastructure. And so that's the best place for you to be. It's, you know, you are the face of the city, so, along with Mr. Casey. And the citizens really need to see that. But I appreciate your offer for volunteering. And on that note, we did swear in nine AOC volunteers last week who'll be working with me and the AOC. They're now volunteer disaster service workers. They've been training for two years and have already been used during the Rafufio oil drill and Tom's Fire and the Sherpa Fires.
And finally, Ms. McGlinchey, I was hearing concern that we want to make sure that our information is provided in Spanish and bilingual communications and written materials. Can you assure us that everything's bilingual?
Madam Mayor, yes. We are putting out bilingual information, so is the county, and we're basically putting out their information as well. We are going to be setting up four kiosks, one on the east side, one on the west side, one at the library, and I believe the other one is going to Vissera Nuevo, with both English and Spanish information. Those will be put up tonight.
Thank you. I don't see any other lights on, so we thank you for the presentation today and the information, Chief Males and Ms. Bjork. And we'll move on to the next item, unless there's anything else on the subject. Okay. What is the next item, Ms. Clerk?
Item number nine, subject, contract for construction of pedestal for the Santa Barbara Police Department Memorial Statue.
So Mr. Wagner, are you starting us off?
I'll be speaking today.
Oh, please, welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. My name is Todd Stoney. I'm the captain of the police department. I'm the spokesperson today on the Fallen Officers Memorial Project, but I'd like to say right off the bat that this, we started this project back in 2014, and it really has been a collaboration of our employees at the Santa Barbara Police Department, our Public Works Department, and pretty much the Santa Barbara community. All the funds that we raised for this were through private donations. As I said, we started this in 2014. We thought it would be important, as we're asking you for some more, for council recommendations today, to kind of give you a history of what we've gone through over the last four years. Today's presentation will talk about the Santa Barbara's fallen officers, the history of our project, our selected artistic design, the partnership we have had with the city and Public Works, and then we'll end up with staff recommendations. First, briefly, I'd like to go through the officers that we will recognize with the memorial, starting Officer Richard Williams. He died July 4th of a horse accident, and that was in December of 1921. In January of 1931, we lost Officer Ronald Waincott on a vehicle accident. October 18th of 1932, we lost Officer Clarence Jensen in a vehicle pursuit on a motorcycle. October 22nd of 1940, Officer Henry Evans, he was involved in a vehicle accident while riding an ambulance. And finally, on January 13th of 1970, we lost Detective Thomas Gary, he was shot by a robbery suspect. So the memorial project, the history itself, like I said, in 2014 October, officers from the Santa Barbara Police Department formed a committee with the vision to create a fallen officer memorial. This memorial will be prominently displayed at the front of the Santa Barbara Police Department, and as I said, all the funding for the project has been obtained by community partnership private donations. In January of 2015, local sculptors Bud Bottoms and Dorothy Boils created a clay project design. Mr. Bottoms is best known for the dolphin fountain at the base of Sterns Wharf, so very prominent sculptor in our community. The design depicted an officer on a lowered knee with a young girl holding a folded flag. In February of 2015, with assistance of Mike Wilshire of Public Works, we had design approval was granted by the Visual Arts and Public Places Planning Committee. In April of 2015, the plan approval was granted by the Historic Landmarks Committee. And in January of 2015, we raised our first $60,000, at which point council approved a professional service agreement with Genesis Bronze. They're located at a Paso Robles to start forming the actual sculpt, take the clay model and make it a real working sculptor. Some pictures, last time we were there, this is the clay model markup of what the life-size sculptor will look like. And on the right pictured, is the plans that were made by Public Works, where you see the placement of the sculpture, the sculpture there front of the police department. Looking, this is our current view of the police department as you walk up the steps, the flagpole picture on the left, it would be in that flattened area there where we would have access to the sculptor and the project itself. Our city partnership, in November of 16, with the assistance of Brad Kinsington of Public Works, the plan reviews for building and safety and planning were granted. And I'm happy to report in January of 2018, our funds passed the $100,000 mark. We actually got to $105,000, which moved us on to our final stage, which is due to formal bidding for the placement of the statue. That was completed, and Facilities Division of Public Works completed the formal bidding process, and that's kind of where we are today. That's the history of where we've been since 2014 to today. So we'd like, recommendation would be for council to award a contract with Civic Construction Associates Incorporated in their low bid amount of $22,000 for construction of the police department memorial statue site work. They were the lowest of the four bids that ranged everywhere from $22,000 to $46,000 to do the placement. Second, we would like the council to accept the $19,800 in donations from the police department's police memorial statue project, increase that appropriations into the police department's grant funds. The only other thing that I think's important to note is that the way the statue was placed. The only other thing that I think is important to note is that the way the statue was produced, it can be moved from location to location. So what we're asking today is just where we want to place the statue. So if at some point there's rumors that there might be a new Police Department, that we could move the statue itself to wherever the new location was.
Okay. Any questions for Captain Stoney? We have a speaker slip from Cam Sanchez. Come on up. Former police chief, and it's wonderful to see you in this room. You're glad you're gone, but we're happy to see you.
Well, I'm not glad I'm gone, but retirement works very well.
I hope you're enjoying your retirement.
I am, thank you so much.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for having me here. First, I understand that retirees get four minutes. Is that true? No, just kidding. I just want to encourage the council to see this through. It's been a long process. I want to thank some people, and that's the reason I'm here, really, to thank some of you who were here when we started, former councilpeople who are no longer on the council, Jim Armstrong, Paul Casey, the chief, and the staff. I really want to thank retired Chief Frank Mannix, our committee was myself, retired Chief Mannix, retired Captain Torres, Todd Stoney, and Lieutenant Mary Lindorroyal. This is a huge thing. The five fallen, their names are in Sacramento at the Police Memorial there. They are also on the Police Memorial in Washington, DC. Our hope and dream and our prayers that we never add another Santa Barbara name to this memorial, but we do want you to know that these five gave the ultimate sacrifice. None of these five ever thought they wouldn't go home that day, but they didn't. In our current outstanding Police Department, every day that they come to work, they don't know if they're going to go home that night. It is a very difficult job. You have a great Police Department, a lot of great people who just step it up every day. I'm here as a resident of Santa Barbara, I'm very proud to be, I was very honored to be employed by the Police Department, and it was just a great joy. But I just wanted to come up and support this item, that it go through and we could get this done. I've had, in my career, two dear friends killed in the line of duty, both partners who were shot and killed in the line of duty. I know how important this is, and I know how important it was to their families to this day. And I just want to also, before I forget, thank Sergeant Riley Harwood for really taking hold of this on a daily basis and letting me bug him so much. So I just want to thank you for your time, and thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this Police Department for so many years. It was a joy and a great honor, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
A pleasure to have you back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, it's back to the council, and there's a recommendation awarding the contract, accepting a donation, and then increasing the appropriations. Pretty straightforward. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to move items A, B, and C for approval.
And a second from Dominguez. Thank you so much. Yes, it would be a wonderful addition to our police headquarters, if it stays there, if it moves, we're grateful. Thank you, Captain Stoney, for your presentation. Any other comments?
Thank you for your time.
We need to take a vote. All in favor, everyone?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Yes, I'll be stepping down on this next item because of, to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Okay, we'll miss you. Go ahead. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item number 10, subject, Measure A, Five-Year Local Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2019 to 2023 Public Hearing.
Mr. Demore, are you ready? This is our Measure A review. Oh, Madam Clerk? Okay, go ahead.
Item 10, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2019 to 2023.
Very good. Take it away.
All right. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Brian Demore, City Engineer for the City of Santa Barbara. Today I will be presenting an item. This is Measure A Program of Projects, five-year program of projects. This is required by the Measure A ordinance, that we do this on an annual basis. Each jurisdiction does that, and collectively, SB CAG pulls all of that together, and they take it to their board. So we've been here before. This time, I'm approaching it a little bit differently with some new councilmembers up here, and rather than looking at Measure A under the microscope, or taking a bit of a step back and looking at the bigger picture of streets funding citywide, and then at the end, we'll hone back in on Measure A and get to the recommendation. So streets funding, just from big picture here, there's two major categories, nondiscretionary and discretionary. The nondiscretionary funds, we have to spend on streets-related projects. The two main categories there are Measure A, which is the local sales tax measure, the countywide sales tax measure, half cent, and then gas tax, which is a statewide thing. And I list SB 1 there, under gas tax, that's a newer portion of the state gas tax with some additional requirements, but that's all nondiscretionary. And then under discretionary is Measure C, which is the newly passed city sales tax measure, one cent, that was passed in November, and utility users' tax, that's again a local tax measure, and half of the revenue generated from that goes towards the general fund, the other half goes to streets. And looking at the revenue for these different sources, I have on this slide FY18 and FY19, the estimated revenues for Measure A, gas tax, and UT. This is where we were at before Measure C and before the SB 1 came along. So looking at that, the numbers, 12.7 million and then 13.2. Most of that money was budgeted for operations. So we were fortunate, last year, just before the budget was finalized, the two-year budget, where SB 1 came along, that gave us a little bit of a boost, not a huge bump up, but we were happy to take that, and we plugged that in immediately to pavement maintenance. So that brought us up to 13.3 and 14.8 total streets fund revenues. Again, most of this was going to operations. And then even better news came along for the streets funding in November 2017 with the passage of Measure C, and we see how that has affected the overall picture here, where we're anticipating about $5.2 million for the measure for this current fiscal year. That's going to be from April 1 through the end of June. And then the 17.35 that's shown there, that's not all of Measure C, that's the anticipated amount that will come before council later as part of the budget process for streets-related things.
Mr. Demore, Mr. Rouse has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Demore, when you mentioned, most of it goes to operations, I can see my telephone lighting up now as we speak, so that's no, there's no capital projects that come out of that, or there's basic maintenance kind of projects? When you say operations, can you kind of tighten that definition up for me a little bit, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, I think I will get into that, I believe, right on the next slide. So that's perfect. But yes, most of the budgeted funds do go to O and M, and in the past, before Measure C, it was 75, 80% of it went towards O and M. And then the smaller portion that went towards CIP, most of that went to pavement maintenance, and then we would try to leverage as best as we possibly could any non-pavement maintenance funds to go after grants. So the grants usually don't show up in the budget because they're more of an unknown, whether we're going to get them or not. So some of the differences, you know, O and M, that's kind of the smaller, non-contract work that's done by city crews, and they're out there, day in and day out, maintaining the streets assets, that's the pavement, the sidewalks, storm drains, the signs, the paint, street trees, graffiti, those types of things. And then on the CIP side, that's more of the contract work, that's typically managed by engineering, the bigger dollar value, pavement maintenance, bridge repairs, sidewalk infill, access ramps, safety improvements. Those are typically the grant-funded projects as well.
That's good, yeah, that, I mean, so there is physical work that goes on in the operations, that's just kind of the definition I wanted to clarify for folks. Thank you.
And just to illustrate that with some photos here, these are our own city crews out and about, doing these types of activities, storm drain repair, some streets repairs, sidewalk repairs, and then to the right, engineering services, we're kind of the, in-between O and M and the capital, we work hand in hand with both so that they're coordinated. And here we see similar work, but on the capital side, with pavement repairs on the left, that's slurry seal operation, and then you see the sidewalk infill and some access ramps. There's a lot more other capital projects, and last week I had the CIP, so I'm not going to get into too much detail on the different things we do on the capital side, but listed here are some of those types of activities that fall under CIP. Pavement maintenance remains our greatest focus with the streets program. It's, I mentioned, the greatest single asset within the city, I would say, for general fund assets, that's definitely the case, 245 centerline miles, 41 million square feet, those are big numbers, I'm not sure that it's easy to grasp that, but the replacement value is over $400 million. So it's a significant asset, and it requires continuous annual reinvestment. Prior to Measure C, the funding was really insufficient to maintain that asset. But fortunately, with SB 1 and now with Measure C, we do have a lot more funding for pavement, and council will see in the months ahead, some additional items coming through, most likely on consent, just wanted to give a heads up on that. In April, we will be, I think on the 17th we're targeting, an action to adopt a resolution for SB 1, where required to list the projects that are intended to be funded with the measure, not with the measure, with the Senate bill. And in this case, right now, I think we're looking at Mission Street being the recipient of the FY19 SB 1 funds. In late April or early May would be an award of contract for the FY18 pavement maintenance project, and I'm going to talk in a little bit about where those locations will be. And then later this summer, we're looking at awarding contracts for the FY19 pavement maintenance contract. So I mentioned FY18. This is primarily funded by Measure C, $4 million of Measure C for the capital investment here, and different locations throughout town, these are some of our more highly-traveled streets, they're closer to the freeway. I'm sure as I get into the, zoomed in here, people will remember having driven some of these streets recently and the real need to get in and do these repairs. So here we are, State Street, kind of the end of the city portion of State Street, as it turns into Hollister up by 154, and the Lacumbra Plaza. That portion of road is in really rough shape. It's difficult to get in there because it requires Caltrans encroachment permits, it requires night work and staging, but now that we have a larger funding source to tap into, we're finally able to get to this, which is in great need. Some work on the east side, over on the other side of this slide, you can see Quinata, Quinientos, and Indio Muerto Streets. These are all grind and overlay. So this isn't a slurry seal, this is scraping off two, three inches of the pavement surface and repaving it, a brand-new paving surface, and then restriping. Some work on Bath and Castillo Streets. These streets have bike lanes, so the bike lanes will get restripped, which will be nice. And then the lower portion of Castillo Street, small segment of Ortega Street, and then we have Cabrillo Boulevard, the end of Cabrillo, down past the Bird Refuge, again, requiring coordination with Caltrans and some tricky staging, just trying to keep traffic flowing as much as we can through that area. Jump back to the overall here, just real quick. It amounts to about 30 city blocks, and just to put that in perspective, for the FY19 project, which we're gearing up for, that we anticipate to be probably about three times bigger. So we may be approaching something close to 100 city blocks for the next project. So that's the reality of Measure C. It's exciting for me, the community hopefully will understand that the short-term disruption will be worth it for the greater condition of our roads. So jumping back to Measure A, you can see here now where Measure A stands compared to overall streets funding. It's a small portion, but a significant portion, we're glad we have it. And as I mentioned earlier, the Measure A ordinance requires this resolution where we adopt the program of projects. The slide that I have here, these numbers have been updated, and I believe all the councilmembers have received updated Exhibit A and Exhibit B. It's been updated somewhat from what was published and from what was delivered late last week. Not too much change on this slide. These numbers were just some very slight tweaks. And then on the other Exhibit B, which you should have, there are some additional changes that were made, just to true things up to the latest budget numbers. And so I've kind of left it there, I jumped past the questions part, but that's the Exhibit B that's included in the resolution, and I just want to make sure that you all have the updated, because that's what needs to be included in the action item. So with that, I will jump back to the questions.
Right, so we've done our due diligence, right? Spending as much money as we're supposed to on alternative transportation, and we're keeping up our end of the bargain by, what's that expression that you use? Measurement of...
So, yeah, Madam Mayor, there's two important elements of Measure A. One is the percent allocation towards alternative transportation, they require 10%, and as you can see from this slide, of the approximately $4 million of Measure A, we're putting in over $800,000 towards alternative transportation, so that's, I think, over 20%, so we're meeting that. And the other piece is maintenance of effort. So when Measure A was passed, there was an element in the ordinance that all of the agencies needed to continue to spend on streets-related projects at the level that they did at the time of the passage of Measure A, adjusted for inflation. And with Measure C, I don't think that's ever going to be a problem for the City of Santa Barbara.
Right, so good news on that. Ms. Nedden, questions for Mr. Demore?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if it's particular to Measure A or in general, but I'm wondering, as we're putting in all these new sidewalks and roads and addressing it, could you tell me a little bit about how much we take into account permeable pavers, or drainages, or recharging the groundwater, and has that, how is that integrated in?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nedden, that's a good question. So the stormwater is an element in all of our design projects. Anything that's over 500 square feet triggers tier, I think it's tier three, the highest level of requirements for our stormwater program, and we're doing that, we're including that in our grant-funded projects. Pavement maintenance is not included, it has an exemption from that. There could be triggers with pavement if we're doing a bunch of associated concrete work, but in general, the capital projects other than pavement, they all have stormwater included. We've done some permeable concrete, we've done permeable pavers, we also have designed some things that have gone within the parkway areas, some chambers that store and then slowly infiltrate stormwater. So we've tried a bunch of different things, trying to adapt to the different constraints of the project, but yes, stormwater is included in all of these. of the project, but yes, stormwater is included in all of these.
Is that something that council could support in a different way beyond triggers? I'm just, I don't even know who to ask that to, but is that something that we could, in the future, policy-wise, have different triggers for so that we were having more of that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, you know, we can certainly take a look at that. The challenge is, some of the materials and methods are relatively new, and we've been experimenting with them, we have a really excellent permeable paver project over by the junior high, to see how that wears. The costs are substantially higher, so we are trying to balance the need to keep up with infrastructure and the need of other needs as well. I think that, looking at it on a community-wide basis, I'm not sure that making permeable asphalt is a better bang for your buck than possibly doing some actual stormwater collection projects that were centered in the city, but we'd really need to take a look at that and do a cost-benefit evaluation in terms of what are the stormwater capture opportunities, and what are the costs associated with it. We are really pretty constrained in doing things in our built infrastructure, particularly roadways, because you are built gutter-to-gutter, and there's just not a lot of space for new issues, and then of course, there's so much infrastructure underneath the pavement as well that can have issues that we have to be careful of. So we're certainly aware of that and looking at it, I think there are opportunities to look at more centralized approaches to stormwater capture, and that's, I think, where I would encourage us to go, but we'd need to do a fair amount of work to get there.
Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about the alternative transportation expenditures. So the asterisk says that sidewalk maintenance and sidewalk access ramp projects are included, and one, I think that's great because research has shown that falling is a much higher incident level and much higher injury and even fatalities around the country, it's like in the top five, so to the extent we can solve that problem, that's great. What percentage of that 827 is sidewalk work?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I'm going to turn to this Exhibit B, and it lists alternative transportation under Measure A, and we support Easy Lift and sidewalk access ramps with $50,000 of Measure A, sidewalk repair, maintenance, $250,000 of Measure A, and then on the operating side for sidewalk maintenance, there's $271,000. So those four numbers add up to the $827,000, that's listed on Exhibit A.
And where it says work trip, what is that, $305,000 under non-Measure A?
Thanks, Ms. Bier.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, our work trip program is a city-sponsored employee alternate transportation program, so the city offers incentives for employees to carpool or take public transportation, and those funds come from charges to the departments that are, whose employees are using those, so it comes from an inter-fund transfer between departments to fund that program.
So where does that money end up?
It ends up being used to pay for those programs, so it goes to the public transport, it goes to offset the cost of, if it's a, using a city, the city has a program of using fleet cars for carpooling for city employees, and there are some costs that the city bears on that, offsetting the cost of the bus services, and with the new train service, offsetting the cost of the employee train service as incentives for alternative transportation.
So we're helping pay for tickets for MTD and the train?
That's correct, and MTD bus passes, yes, as well.
And so I'm curious why we don't spend any Measure A money on that?
I'm not sure that that would qualify for a Measure A program, since it's more operational, and we can look into whether or not to do that, it would of course reduce the other things that we can spend the Measure A programs on. These are direct employee costs, so I think that the rationale behind it was, these are the costs of employment versus really a alternative transportation project, it really is costs associated with recruiting and retaining employees, and therefore those costs are borne by the departments that employ those employees.
And that makes sense, because other than the MTD, it seems like the other programs would be designed for people out of town, so not people who are residents and paying different types of fees or taxes associated with being a resident.
And Councilmember Dominguez, I did want to say that prior to Measure A, Measure D, the money for MTD would come to the city and we would do a transfer to MTD. With Measure A, MTD does get Measure A dollars that used to come to the city and then be allocated to MTD, they now get those directly. So MTD is also included, but you're not seeing it here because it's not allocated to us.
Oh, great. And then regarding bike improvements, is that a zero?
For Measure A, yes, the bicycle improvements are funded through TDA, which is a separate fund.
So are we able to do bike improvements through Measure A?
That would be eligible.
So what would we have to do in order to make that happen?
Councilmember Dominguez, what we really do is we try and strategize on how we leverage the funds we have in our bicycle, some of our funds are more restricted than others, we've been very successful in our bike improvements. The TDA money, which is Transportation Development Act money, is very restricted in what it can be used for, more restricted than Measure A, so we use that preferentially, you're going to see an item on that coming up in the next couple of weeks, we use that as grant match to leverage grant projects, but we've been very successful with the bicycle master plan and being able to get grant funding with those match funds to maximize our expenditures. So moving the TDA money to other programs probably would have less benefit for the city, so I think that really matching our funding sources with the opportunities lets us get the most mileage out of our dollars.
And I really like the idea of matching, the problem is if it's just $75,000 and we match it to 150, we have 6% of our population more or less bike commuting or biking around town, and I'd love to see more people out there, so how we would get more people out there is to spend more than 6% on improvements.
And we look at that very carefully in terms of our grants, in terms of the opportunities for it, some of, our staff have done a just fantastic job of figuring out the scoring and figuring out what it will take us to qualify, and if we need grant, if we need match funds to make us get above that line, we'll give it, but if we think we can get there without those match funds, we go without. And so for instance, all of the projects that we're seeing on the east side right now were submitted as 100% grant projects, we've had some changes in design that have meant we've needed to provide some money for them, but they initially did qualify as 100% grant projects. The scope of the things like Los Pacitas Bike Path that we're really excited about trying to get grant money for are just huge, it's $20 million, it would take such a huge part of the resource that I think would challenge us, and we have a really good opportunity, we believe, for a grant there, and we're looking at whether to, how much we should do in match on that one. So really carefully looking at all of our resources, what bucket they fit in and how to allocate them.
And regarding the $33 million number, how much of that will we be able to spend on Streets? Will we have enough internal resources to plan and manage, and then enough external resources to actually do the work? Are we starting to run into some ceilings?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we believe that we will be able to spend the entire portion that we're allocating to paving, which is about $15 million, I believe, next year, pending council approval, of course, this is still pending council approval, on Streets, and as Mr. DeMore said, it'll be over 100 blocks of paving that we'll have to do, but we're confident that we can get that level of work done. It will be an impact to the community, it will be felt, and hopefully it will be felt in a good way as soon as we get it done and get out of there, because our Streets really are in need of significant repair.
So then where does the other 18 million go?
The 33 into other types of infrastructure, and I believe, did you have that all on number B, Attachment B?
Yes.
I think it's all lined out on that Attachment B.
I...
And certainly, we will be going over this in more detail at our budget presentation to you, we wanted to give you the Measure A information with some context of how overall Street money is spent.
So this $14,900,000, that's the number?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could you repeat that question, sorry?
So you're saying, we said Attachment B, I'm assuming that's the same as Exhibit B?
I think that was...
And so that 14,900,000, that's the amount that is the difference between the 100 blocks, $15 million and $33 million, that's shown as the total funding available? Because there's a $3 million amount here and a $2 million mark here for roadway maintenance, so that would be more like $20 million going towards roads?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, one thing I didn't point out on that exhibit, and should, is that Measure C is not included in there because it hasn't been to council yet, so it's not currently displayed in Exhibit B. When I gave the revenue picture, that was included, where you saw that $33 million number, but the exhibit doesn't show where the different Measure C monies are intended, that will come to council later, I think as part of the budget process.
So the $3 million in here for pavement maintenance in Line 2, and then down a few lines, roadway maintenance for $2 million, is that part of the $15 million that you're saying it'll cost to do the 100 blocks, or is that a separate project, or two separate projects?
So the 100 blocks roughly, mostly will be funded by Measure C. What we see here in Exhibit B, this is Measure A, UUT and gas tax money, which will also contribute towards the pavement maintenance contract, so that would be a portion of what we're looking at for FY19 with this 100-block project. And some of it is operations, the, under roadway maintenance, under 2, that roughly $2 million number, that's operations, up above is the Capitol line, which is nearly $3 million, so that would be added to what we anticipate from Measure C, pending council approval, roughly $12 million, so 3 plus 12, we're looking at upwards of a $15 million paving project for next fiscal year.
So you're pulling $2.5 million from Measure A, and you're anticipating revenue of $17 million from Measure C for a $15 million project, so that seems like you're going to have 17 minus 2.5, $5 million left over.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I think we're really focusing on pavement here because that's been the real focus on trying to get additional resources. There are a lot of other portions of infrastructure associated with a street, storm drains, street lights, signals, street trees, sidewalks, curb and gutter, all of which we are recommending or will be recommending additional allocations of Measure C money for, and so that's going to be the difference between what you're seeing for paving and what you're seeing for total cost there.
And we'll see that at budget time?
That's right.
Great, thank you.
All right, good questions. Mr. Friedman?
I just had a question on how we fund our 1% sewer pipe replacements, this doesn't include any of that, correct, and could it if we wanted to do that, or is there another source that funds that?
Madam Mayor.
Ultimately, I'd like to understand that 1% number and why it's 1%, and what it would cost to actually increase that, and then the other portion of it is if we're doing these 100 blocks, it seems like it'd be an opportunity to coordinate that replacement as well. So I'm just trying to understand that component, I know we'll get more at budget, but if you could kind of give us a quick synopsis now and more detail later.
So Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, when we talk about sewers, in the common vernacular, there are two kinds of sewers, there are storm sewers and sanitary sewers. And so our sanitary sewers, our wastewater system, is a part of the wastewater utility, and that's entirely funded through wastewater ratepayer fees. You could put general fund money towards paying for wastewater, you can't put wastewater money towards paying for general fund infrastructure, so you can go one way but not the other. So the 1% is actually understated right now, we are doing more than that, we're doing about 1.5% per year, we are going to do our best to try and coordinate the main replacement ahead of paving, and hopefully we'll be largely successful on that. Unfortunately, sometimes we find things that just can't wait, that we need to get out and repair, and so, especially when we're doing as much work as we're proposing to do, both on the pavement maintenance and on the wastewater system, and now we're also going to be doing storm drains and water mains, there's a lot of different moving pieces, and sometimes priorities just do not align and doesn't allow us to get those complete alignment of, we're going to do all the underground work first and then do the nice paving, but we're certainly going to try and do that.
We have no speaker slips. Mr. Friedman, since you have the floor, would you like to make a motion, it's adopting a resolution on the program of projects, is that right? Any other comments, Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, in making the motion, if you could just emphasize that you're adopting the revised handouts that we provided to you, not the ones that were included in the staff report.
Sure, I'll make the motion to include the revised staff handouts.
Was that a second, Mr. Rouse? Any other discussion? All in favor? Hi? That looks unanimous. Ms. Estrada, thank you. So we'll do committee assignment reports and then go to a closed session. I have some, go ahead, Ms. Sneddon, you're first.
Let's see, attended Water Commission, and one of the issues was the El Estero Treatment Plant funding, which we saw today at council, some things that will be coming to council in the future, future, funding for construction of Hitchcock Way Intercept, where sewage apparently gets backed up there, and they need to make a new branch so that it can provide some relief there. CCRB continuing to work with the Bureau of Reclamation and the National Marine Fisheries Service for water release plans, that's in ongoing negotiation. Really great sustainability committee meeting, talking about a dashboard and different ways to highlight and communicate to the public all the different ways that the city is addressing sustainability, it was a really great first meeting that I attended, and that was great. Ordinance Committee, we already heard from, I received my community development orientation this morning, went to the Montecito Center for Preparedness, Recovery and Rebuilding, and they had some really great ideas that I think are valuable to the city also as a resource. And then just one more item, this weekend, I had a booth at the Science Discovery Day at City College and spent four hours educating the public on debris flows, mechanics of debris flows, geologic maps of where they're likely, and I'll be sharing those poster boards and resources with the Montecito Center for Preparedness so they can have a display, and I'll be available there to discuss that with the public.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez, your light's on, is it on from, go ahead.
I attended the ad hoc, I'm not sure if it's exactly the ad hoc DSAL committee, but a meeting with another council member and staff on DSAL issues, and we're making progress, and I'm excited about that.
Very good. I went to the youth council meeting yesterday, they're having a leadership conference, we're all invited, they look up to us, you know, it's Saturday morning, April 28, 9:00 in the morning, Saturday morning at 9:00 in the morning, come on, get out of bed and come down there, and they would love to see us there, the youth leadership conference. Congratulations to Special Olympics for their basketball tournament, really high energy there at the Thunderdome. Congratulations to UCSB's, it's at the Moser House, it had a different name, but it's an incubator space for student entrepreneurs at UCSB, and it was nice to see Chancellor Yang. And Bren School is involved with that, too. I attended the SB CAG meeting and APCD last week, and SB CAG, we're all very excited about the new train service, early morning train service, we looked at the work plan, of course, widening 101 is high on the list, we completed Highway 246 passing lanes, you know, it's a countywide thing, and so North County really wanted those passing lanes. APC... APCD, oh, another strange thing that we learned at SB CAG was that the Region 5 Caltrans Director is being temporarily reassigned. And so I asked, is how, how often does that happen? And they said it happens quite often. They kind of play musical chairs a little bit with their leadership, but, so SB CAG staff is keeping an eye on whether that's going to make a difference to us and our concerns here. Caltrans, important agency to us. APCD is continuing with its program, giving financial incentives for freight ships to slow down in the channel. It reduces air pollution, and it also reduces whale strikes. So it's kind of a, a good thing on those two counts. And the Neighborhood Advisory Council meeting, I was there, and they looked at capital improvement projects related to the Parks Department. So that's all I've got. I don't see any other lights. Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
I thought you were going to mention it, but since you and I were both attended the Botanic Garden.
I forgot. Oh, that was good.
Yeah. We attended the Botanic Garden kickoff for the Santa Barbara County Conservation Blueprint, and their website is sbcblueprint.net. And this is a years-long effort that's come to fruition with many different stakeholders, including the Santa Barbara Foundation through their LEAF initiative, the Land Trust, the Botanic Garden, private property owners. And it's an online GIS mapping tool of the county that has hundreds of different layers that you can use for informational tools, from anything from, from watershed planning to fire, historical data, agriculture. And it's a living document, so it's quite exciting, and it's just been rolled out. So I encourage those in the community to take a look at it. And there was, we'd say about over 50 people attended the kickoff. It was packed at the, at the garden. So it was a, a great tool that will be useful for a lot of planning purposes going forward.
And there was a good question about how do we use it to address climate change? And so there, people are already looking at applying it. So Ms. Estrada, what's the next item? Closed session?
Item number 11. Subject: Conference with Labor Negotiator as Describing Agenda Item Number 11.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn to closed session. Thank you.